We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thirty, and if we can please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for being here. Um, just want to go over our meeting guidelines and safety protocol. Purpose of this meeting is for the board to conduct board business and the meeting is open to the public. And it is being recorded. You can listen to all past board meetings by visiting Board Docs, which is located on our district website. And this meeting is being presented via Zoom as well. And just a reminder, it's not appropriate for audience members to interrupt board business or ask questions during the meeting. Agenda items will be addressed as listed in the agenda. And in case of emergency, please immediately exit to the exit closest to you. And with that Director Roca, will you share our vision and mission statement?
Sure, our vision is our community inspires and prepares each student to thrive. On our mission is in connection with our community, the Squim School District, empower staff to inspire hope and provide flexible innovative learning opportunities in a safe and respectful environment so that each student thrives.
Great, thank you. And um, would you care to share our land acknowledgement pack?
We acknowledge the land we stand on. The Squim School District Administrative and School Buildings sit on the ancestral land of the Squallum people. While the Squallum traditionally come from one nation, history has led to the formation of three sovereign Squallum, Quallum tribal governments. Lower Elwak Quallum Tribe located in Port Angeles, Washington. Jamestown Squallum Tribe located in Squim, Washington. Port Gamble Squallum Tribe located in Kingston, Washington. The district's primary partnership is with the Jamestown Squallum Tribe. Today, the tribe and district share a partnership that includes official consultation on program and funding changes that may directly affect American Indian and Alaska Native students as well as holistic service planning for students to remain successful in their educational journeys.
Great, thank you very much. And we're going to get started with the first uh, two point zero one. We have some special recognition happening with our uh, with our girls bowling team. And so I would like, I would love to to welcome uh, Coach uh, Coach Randy Perry to, if he wants to come on up and other guests and and it's fantastic news. Yeah, come on up.
But thanks for having us here today. Um, this is a special group. Most of them have been with me for four years, a couple of them for three years. And they stuck it out through every year, came to practice, came to our matches. And uh, having the GPA that they had this year was better than they had last year. I think it's three point nine eight seven this year. Nine eight six for six of them. And uh, even our JV was three eight something, so three eight seven, I believe. Uh, so that's really important to these girls. I always say they're overachievers, extreme overachievers. They've always got something going on over here, something going on over here with school and with uh, bowling. So um, a lot of times they have to juggle all that stuff. I couldn't imagine doing that myself um, when I was in high school. But uh, a lot of fun to be around these girls and watch them grow up, to be able to come out and do what they did this year. And two of them made it to uh, state, Victoria behind me and Sky over here. So we got that Thursday, we'll be heading off to Tuck Willa for individuals to see how they do there, so.
Anybody else want to get up here and say something about uh, how bowling went for you guys? You got a minute?
Yeah, I'd love to, love to hear a little bit, yeah.
So I've been bowling for four years and I've seen so many girls come and go through the bowling team. But like, these girls are some of the ones that I've had like the closest relationship with. And it's been so much being on the varsity team these last two years and getting able, like being able to move on. Especially last year when we all went to districts together, that was really special. Coach cried. To be honest, we all kind of did. And um, this year we didn't go to um, districts together. We did, I'd like as a team, but we did get to go together, which was really fun. And now me and Sky are moving on and it's like our last year bowling. So it's like really emotional and like Cooper said, like a lot of us probably like borderline gonna cry. But yeah, it's, it's really special. It helped me like have like a release throughout school. Cause again, Coach said we're overachievers in this team. Like in fact, majority of us just came from rehearsals. We're in currently in rehearsals right now for the play that's going on um, this next weekend. And yeah, so this was just a really fun way to get out there and release some energy and have fun with some of the girls at our school and just enjoy high school.
Yeah, awesome. Congratulations.
Uh, this is Joanna.
Hi, Joan.
Kara, Cooper, Victoria, Kimberly and Skylar. And uh, they're probably, I can remember their names. It took me three years to get Kara's name. And yeah. And I'm still working on another girl that we've had two years, getting her names correct. Probably not. Is it Michaela? Yeah. Kyle, yeah, I said it, so yeah. I've got girls with the same name spelled differently. It was spelled the same and pronounced differently and it's possible. My seventeenth year, so goes by really fast. Doesn't feel like I've been doing it this long, but it's pretty cool. Last year I got to uh, coach uh, my granddaughter for the last year. She bowled for me for four years. My daughter bowled for Squim when we moved here for one year, so full circle all the way around. It's, it was pretty cool. Again, these girls are going to go off to do great things and I guarantee they're going to remember their times with the team and bowling. And a lot of times that changes their whole outlook in school and life and everything because they get friends. They keep those friends. I was just talking to a couple of them today about that and going to college and you're going to have these friends for the rest of your life. Guarantee it, so but again, thanks for having us here, really appreciate it.
Yeah, well, thank you and congratulations, yeah. Pat, do you have something?
I'm wondering where you get these Squim Lady Wolves um, swag. I'm looking at your sweatshirt.
Yeah, this, yeah, we've had these on our jerseys before. We had these, these made up years ago. This was something that I had somebody draw up. I wanted a wolf, kind of a bit of female wolf. That brought our mascot and I forgot. Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, but uh, we kind of went away from that a little bit. They wanted something a little plainer, I think, but uh, yeah, this is pretty cool. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to shout out my mom Wendy Maury, who made about fifteen sweatshirts this year. So we do have swag, we're not wearing it, but it's glittery. It's gold and purple and it has our names on it. It says Squim Bowling and it's got bowling balls all over it and we put got senior down the side for the seniors. And my mom handmade all of that using her cricket and ironing it on and she did for the entire team. Um, she also made a hat for Randy and our assistant coach. And uh, she also made her senior baskets for all of us, so. Oh, sorry. Um, and then side part, we have a purple fluffy mascot wolf, stuffed wolf, and his name is Woke. Their name is Woke and um, he has a collar made by Coach Randy that is purple and studded and said, and he's got a dog tag. And then um, Skylar's mom sewed together a yellow cape for him to wear. And my mom ironed on a matching bowling glitter decal on it too. So she matches our sweatshirts, so.
Very cool.
Well, without our parents, yeah.
All right, anybody else? Good?
Yeah.
Big shout out to the coach because like he said, he's been doing this for seventeen years. And like this year, we are all seniors, so all of us are going to be moving on. But just like the connection that we've all had this year has just been remarkable and nothing really compares to it. Like we all sit in the bus and like, sorry to say this again, but he totally cried at districts this year too. And like, all of us did because we've never really had like that connection before. Like we've always had people stick around, but this is the first year like in a while that it'll be all of us being varsity. So just really big shout out to Coach because he does so much more than what it seems.
Yeah, thank you. Alright.
Alright, thank you guys.
Alright.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, good luck to those who are going to state too. Stuff. Awesome.
Great way to start a meeting, yes.
Alright, next uh. Oh yeah. We're gonna do our, did I skip all that? Okay. Thanks for taking me on back. Uh, bond and levy uh, support acknowledgement. We have a few items here, right?
Yes. Um, just like to share that uh, in your packet, you do have uh, letters of acknowledgement or support from several different uh, groups, including the city of Squim, um, the commissioners of course, and then a letter written from the president of Olympic Medical Center, all in support of our bond and levy propositions. And so we'd just like to say thank you to our community partners. And uh, we certainly do feel on the peninsula that we have extended support for other um, initiatives that have happened across the peninsula and have been partnered with for many things. Uh, this is just yet another example and we appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Definitely appreciate the acknowledgement, so the support, so. Okay. Let's go on, any um, next, uh, just any objection to the approval of minutes from January thirteenth to January twenty second? As well as our agenda and our consent agenda?
I have no objection, but I did want to call out and appreciate Patty Zetas for a thousand dollar donation uh, for the installation of a special education swing at Gray Wolf Elementary. I think that's a very nice thing to do for our children here, so thank you Patty.
Alright, hearing no objection, we'll consider those approved. And that's going to bring us to our public comment portion of the meeting. And if you are attending via Zoom and would like to make public comment, you will need to do so using the raise hand feature that's located on the bottom of your screen. Should be an icon to raise hand. Go ahead and do that now if you're liking, if you would like to make public comment and you are attending the meeting virtually. And we'll take a look, see if we have any individuals signed up in person. Give just a moment. Alright, anybody Zoom? Okay, so we don't have any uh, public comments, so we will go ahead and move on to our student board representative reports.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all well. Um, this week, the students of Squim High School started second semester, second semester classes. Uh, grades are being finalized and report cards will be sent out next week. On another note, our senior class will be uh, presenting our senior class play called uh, Squim Cinderella, a Squim Cinderella story. It was written by members of our very own senior class. Performances are in the Squim High School Auditorium on February thirteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth at seven PM and the matinee on February sixteenth at two PM. Tickets are fifteen dollars or twelve for students with ASP. Tickets can be purchased at the door or online at the Squim School District's website. We hope you come out and support the senior class. That is all I have for today, thank you.
Thank you.
And Lincoln has excused the seat.
Okay. Um, gonna move us to uh, reports to the board and we're going to start with eight point zero one with Director Young.
Hello, hello. So uh, this is just going to be a quick report. I want to uh, prime you guys for, for what's uh, what's coming. Um, and hopefully uh, talk about some solutions. So Windows ten end of support is our status and, and plan for right now. Um, so. Uh, as far as how Windows tense ends of support impacts us, uh, our risk pool and cybersecurity best practices require active security fixes and updates in October of this year that'll cease. Uh, unsupported Windows ten PCs becoming insecure and then they'll violate the requirements and recommendations. Uh, Microsoft and other vendors will also stop supporting Windows ten, including Microsoft Office and mandatory state testing software, for example. I saw I did some sources there as well on that.
Okay.
Uh, how do we get here? So uh, we have some staff devices that are Windows eleven eligible, some of which are CTE funded. However, five hundred, around five hundred staff PCs deployed around the district are not Windows eleven eligible. Uh, of our three thousand, around three thousand two hundred active student PCs, uh, around two thousand are Windows eleven eligible. Those are concentrated at the middle school and the high school. Uh, ninety-nine percent of our Windows eleven eligible PCs were funded by COVID relief related grants or CTE grants. Uh, the district has invested almost no general funds or levy funds into purchasing Windows eleven PCs beyond supplementary quantities. And we've, we've, that's been a good thing in the sense that we've gotten this, the support. Um, but you know, so that's, that's where we're at now. Uh, can grants save us? No, uh, but we will continue to pursue applicable grants as they become available in any case. Uh, and our options for, for funding these replacement devices, uh, we're, we're hoping to get funding from levies, uh, grants and maybe even some legislation driven funds, uh, but you know, of course, we'll see. Okay, uh, so right now we're recommending two potential options. Uh, we prefer option one is to get the staff some new computers first. Um, and we're hoping that in going through a, a leasing model with deferred payment uh, would allow us to utilize the EPNO levy funds, the, the, that will be, become available starting next year. Um, to, to start making those, those payments for those devices, but, but allow us to get the devices to the staff uh, before Windows ten uh, reaches end of support. And then we'll pair that with um, pursuing the student devices next year uh, by help, having them limp along for, for one more year with the Windows uh, extended security updates. Um, if, if we go with that option, that still gives us some time to pursue Chromebooks for K five, which will require a little bit of work on the backend to get our environment set up to support them. Uh, because right now they're all, all Windows devices. And yeah, just having some more time to determine this and, and find some additional grants would, would be beneficial. Option two, just kind of the same, but reversed where we go for the student devices first. The concern with that is that most of what students do can be done in a web browser. Uh, staff tend to be a little more involved in their usage with the exception of CTE, of course. But CTE has their own funds and, and, and efforts that, that we're supporting. Um, so uh, my concern is that the impact would be greater on staff to have to wait even though there are fewer devices, so. In either case, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's a concern because if, even if we do start leasing staff devices this year, they won't be paid off next year. And then we'll have to start leasing student vices if, if that's the model we're pursuing. So we've, we've got some work to do to figure out how to pay for these computers in one way or another. Because yeah, they're, they're at the end of their useful life. Okay. Uh, and our timeline right now, uh, we're, we're, we're gathering staff input. Um, we're doing research on grants. Uh, we'll be getting quotes and, and having meetings with leasing companies to figure out what our, what our best options are and having to compete with one another to give us our best options. Uh, and then we hope to have a, a formal recommendation prepared for the next board meeting to, to, to take action. That's it.
Oh, go ahead there.
I was gonna say, it's fine oxymoron to talk about long-term technology solutions.
Right.
But looking down with um, the funding situation and rapid changing in technology and looking to our fiduciary responsibility, I mean like, are we gonna have to go through this every two years, three years, five years? It's gonna be a reoccurring major expense.
Yes, um, however, if we do move towards a, a leasing model, um, some of the leasing organizations build in the buyback price and thus offsetting um, some or all of the interest. In, in the case of the laptops that we began leasing last year, the, the value built in in the buyback actually is greater than what the interest fees. So we're actually paying less per month than we would have had we bought them outright with zero percent interest. So you know, I, I, I don't know that every opportunity will, will allow that to be the case. Especially if we want to go longer term on the staff devices, we may want to go five years. Whereas on those student vices, we were thinking three years just because they, they tend to um, you know, get, get a little more wear and tear. And also because uh, student vices are typically closer to entry level, whereas staff devices are going to be more, you know, the workhorse style of machine. Um, so yeah, there's, there's still, there's still some work to be done and figuring out what the best options are. And that's one of the reasons we're, you know, going to be talking with the um, the teachers and, and various other groups to, to figure out what, what's going to be the best model for, for staff and for students.
I have a question about leased um, laptops.
Yes.
I know when we have ones that we own, if they break or there's a problem with it, you guys have mostly been repairing them, right? So what happens if with leased ones, is that the same or?
Uh, so what, what we're doing with the middle school is uh, we, we had to have our, which our, 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 our staff is still in the process of completing all the backend certification type stuff. But once that's completed, we can actually perform warranty repairs.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so that Dell ships us the parts. Uh, we perform the repairs, we document it, send the documentation to Dell, uh, and then they approve it. And so it's all, it's all paid for and built into the price of the machines.
I'd just like to add, um, the reason for option one and why we feel strongly about that recommendation is because our staff devices are facing memory issues, battery issues. We have staff, um, and you're utilizing curriculum that's online and you're needing to facilitate so many aspects of that. Um, it's critical that you have strong memory. Just think about grading online and to have a computer that you think is at risk for being able to either be A responsive to you when you're in the time of need to do things or to be saving work. So we, we do recognize that that's a critical situation. I also would like to commend Director Young because we really started down the road of exploring leasing as a potential option. And it was new to our school district. But the um, structure that he has uh, come to find, the work that he's done in researching leasing companies and the different models that they use, um, it's well done. And so I think we're able to talk now at a different level about how we can seek quotes and be able to ask them for the uh, type of system that bets best suits us, so well done.
Do any of these um, devices that staff are using, do we have any of them that are specifically needed to power? Like, like we have like smart boards or any technology that's actually interfacing directly with students that are, that we need these devices for, or is it solely just for staff?
Um, yeah, so, so some of the devices are uh, say like the circulation desk computers at the libraries. Um, in the cases uh, at Gray Wolf where they have the smart boards, they um, connect to those smart boards digitally to then send uh, uh, content to the, to the smart boards and to the screens, uh, some of which the students interact with directly.
Okay, alright. So definitely, even though when we're talking about staff, computers, it's, it's students, students are, are directly like it's not just that.
In many cases directly, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, at, at the secondary levels, that's more on the CTE side of things.
Right, okay.
But yes, yeah, absolutely at the primary and elementary levels. In fact, um, uh, one of the systems that we switched over to at the elementary uh, required staff to have touchscreen laptops. And they didn't, so we had to find laptops elsewhere from our student supplies who then issued to the staff to use for these touchscreen assessments um, as, as part of that.
Okay.
Yeah, which they were also doing directly with the students.
The other question I had in this, I know this may be a question for you, um, Super Dint Nichols, I um, uh, and, and you don't have to, we can get back to me on it, it seems like we have a little bit of time, but I'm just wondering, I know that one of the things we're looking at is um, or that the state is looking at is providing additional funding for MSOC. And I'm just wondering if um, its materials supplies and operational costs or operating costs, if any of this, not that, not that we're going to hold their breath on the state fu- funding it, but if this would, you know, if there was a, a surge of additional funding, if this qualifies to be an expense out of that, out of that bucket budget, so.
Um, I would say that we certainly can look at it as a material, but um, materials are generally something that is utilized and used up. And so the uh, infrastructure for technology, I think, would be um, a different level of qualification. It's more of an instructional equipment purchase.
Hmm, okay, yeah. I was almost thinking uh, more along lines of operating costs. Like it's, you know, we have to have them in order for, to keep our operation running.
That, that is true, we do. Um, I will say this, um, it's really important to recognize that it is an ongoing cost to keep your technology fresh. And when we have the situation where we purchase so much technology with COVID funds, we have timelines that aren't cycling. You know, we don't have a two-year refresh and then a third year refresh and a fourth year. So that is one thing that we are discussing as well, is how do we get on a cycle that's actually sustainable? Um, we're looking at that.
Okay. Anything else?
Is this, these numbers would still be keeping one-to-one in the middle school and high school?
We currently are not one-to-one at the high school. Um, we are working to have carts in every classroom so that students can access computers in their classes and have enough so that the highest number of students in a class would be able to access a computer. We have take-home checkout computers that can be utilized by students who require that. But that is one of the aspects of student uh, computer need is uh, high school. Um, there is an interest in one-to-one at the high school, of course. But at this time, we are using the cart-based model.
With these numbers?
Yeah, so, so to be clear, the reason why there's thirty-two hundred computers, but somehow we're not one-to-one is because when you have things like, there's a hundred and twenty-eight desktops in the library. Or uh, you know, there are CTE classes that have thirty-two, thirty-four computers in them. Um, you know, that, that starts to add up. Uh, and not to mention, um, you know, we, there are, there are some spares that ha- that are in inventory for, for rope, for either for, in the carts themselves. So if, if a class has, you know, thirty-two kids, we try to build the cart to have thirty-four devices in it. So things like that add up and that's, that's how we get to having more devices than we have students, yet also still not necessarily having a cart in every classroom. Because in, in many cases like that, we end up with more than what are in one class, but not, not in a way that allows every class to have as many devices as.
And I assume there's a cycle, there's probably some that are out of service or, you know, getting repaired.
No, that thirty-two hundred is active.
Is active?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Cause if, if, if one class has classes of twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-two, we have to put thirty-four devices in there. And then if the next class has classes of, you know, twenty, 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 thirty, we have to put thirty-two in that one, right? So, so we have to build those carts to support the largest class, even though every class, every day isn't that big. So we end up with, and that's, that's one of the downsides to having a cart model versus the one-to-one. But so far, the numbers of devices that we're seeing damaged or destroyed have just fallen off the radar almost entirely. We've been very pleased with that part of it. It's just we, we don't have the quantity of devices to, 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 to sort of make up for it right now.
Well, thank you for taking care of that.
Yes, absolutely.
And I know you mentioned um, take-home devices too. So um, even though we're not necessarily one-to-one per se, can, can I assume any student that, that needs one? There, there's an, there's an ability to, to bring, like if there's no, no other source computer for them to use at home, that they, there is a method to where they, they can, they can take one.
At the secondary level, yes. Um, if the student has an IEP, there are some resources available for, for students there as well in special cases. Um, but yeah, it, it depends on the school and of course, obviously with their virtual school, um, we, we make devices available for all, all those families as well.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
These computers just also involve like office staff, paraprofessionals, the maintenance department, bus barns.
That's that, approximately five hundred devices, that, that includes basically all of them.
Educational staff.
Oh, it's all staff.
Not just teachers.
Correct, yes. District, I mean, we, there's, there's maybe forty computers in the district that are primarily used by staff that are Windows eleven eligible and all the rest of them are not. Because we've just been sort of, you know, we, we bought what we could when we had limited funding available and we've been making them last as long as we can, but there's just, because we, yeah, it's, we, we're, we're gonna need some money.
Yeah, okay, alright. Okay, alright. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that's gonna bring us to our annual CTE report.
How are y'all doing today?
Excellent.
How are you? It's kind of gloom and doom, let's get to some good news. Um, for those of you don't know me, I'm Ned Flader, I'm the CTE director. I'm in my fourth year as a CTE director for Squim. Next slide please. Uh, we're gonna cover today, uh, just briefly, our staffing, our student enrollment, course offerings, some of the changes that have been made to those, graduation pathways, which are very important to the lifeblood of our uh, program. Those include uh, including industry-ready credentials and some dual credit articulations and changes to those. And we'll then just briefly go over some of the career tech student organizations commonly referred to as CTSOs. Uh, we're gonna talk a little bit about some of the program achievements and some of our limiting factors as we move forward. Next slide please. Um, here's our vision. And uh, we want to create uh, strong relationships with our community, our regional colleges, labor and industry and nonprofits. And to that end, we've been really working that. And you'll see a little bit later on in the slide presentation, uh, some of the evidences of us achieving that goal statement. We want to develop and enhance our CTE program. We want to develop and enhance our CTE programs that align with local job market needs, and this includes bringing in first-rate technology, you know, things that, and just as a a summary of that statement. If you're working in our automotives department and you get a job in an automotive service center, we want that equipment that that person's using in the automotive service center to be, to be just like the stuff they saw in our shop. And that goes for every program that we have in CTEs. We want to modernize it to that level. We want to build a more comprehensive four-year CTE plan, and that's a living document. Every year we've added, adding to it, and I've had a meeting most recently with Superintendent Nichols. And we're gonna talk that over at length, so that our plan really matches the strategic goals of our district. And then finally, we want to complete the design and begin building implementation of the new CTE Center for Excellence. Next slide. Currently, we have twenty staff members assigned to CTE. Uh, and they span from the middle school to the high school. We've added three new staff members this year. Heather Hamilton in the middle school, and she teaches in our science department. Sven Wicker, he's new to our middle school this semester. He's a half-time employee and he's working in our introduction to industry trades, a new program that we put in. And then Bill Kinnick, and he is a long-term sub that's doing digital media and multimedia at the middle school. Next slide. Currently, we have forty-nine offerings at the high school and seven offerings at the middle school. Next slide, for a total of fifty-six approved programs. And we just received our verification report from OSPI. A hundred percent. Not an error on it. So that was really good. I mean, that was actually a miracle. I had to look at it twice and someone had to screw this one up, but no, it was good. Uh, some of the programs that we've brought in this year is the intro to industrial trades, and it was really piloted by Mr. McFarland. Uh, for the first semester, we had twenty-eight or so students enrolled in that at the middle school. And if you've been around, you've seen picnic tables built, hobby horses built, tool sheds built. And in fact, they're engaged in a project at OPA where they're building a outdoor learning space slash gazebo for our greenhouse area over there. And that's their culminating project from last semester. Mr. McFarland is facilitating that with some of the folks from the first semester. And that's in partnership with the middle school. And how we actually funded that was through the Port Authority Commission gave us a twenty-seven hundred dollar grant to get that done. So that was really kind of a cool deal. Uh, this year, we've also included at the high school an AP Environmental Science, and Miss Janay is running that program. Uh, actually had an opportunity to observe that a few different times, and kids are pretty engaged at, at that AP level. And then for next year, we've approved it at our general committee. But we're working on the frameworks for introducing construction foundations into the high school next year. One of the things I think I'm very excited about is the growth of CTE in terms of just student enrollment. You can see, four years ago, our average enrollment for the year was two-hundred-and-eighteen FTE. And today it's three-hundred-and-eleven FTE. So that's a significant increase in student enrollment, which equates to a significant increase in enhanced funding that CT is authorized per FTE. So let's just say, you know, and this is, you know, just hypothetical, let's, for ease of numbers. Let's say we get ten thousand dollars per student, general education FTE, you could add probably another eight to nine hundred dollars for every FTE of, of, of CTE funding. So that's a considerable amount of extra funding, but that program requires it as well. And so I'm real excited about that. And if you really take a look at where that increase has come, initially it came right at the middle school. But as kids are coming out of the middle school into the high school with greater programs in the middle school, you're seeing an increase at the high school. So this year, the increase is correlating from the middle school to the high school. Those numbers actually correlate. So that's a, a real good indicator that our, our strategy of bolstering the, the middle school program is leading to greater enrollments at the high school. Next slide. Talk a little bit about the industry trades. There's a little picture of one of our students there, just a great bunch of funds, been really highly visible for our staff to go. A lot of folks have gone and, and looked at it. It's also, I'm getting a lot of feedback from our community about how excited they are about this one little program that we've been able to bring in to the middle school. Uh, because it leads to other programs that we're gonna bring into the high school. And I just really want to shout out to Mr. McFarland, who has kind of shepherded this program. But also, he's bringing along our newest CTE teacher, Stan Wicker, who's coming to us from out of industry, from construction industry. And so you can imagine his excitement, but also the learning curve he's on in learning how to take what he knows from construction and bring it into the classroom. A real shout out to Mr. McFarland and Charles Cox, who really helped out. Next slide. Again, our plan going forward, one of the things that we're always held accountable to is equity for our student base. And one of the things I'm really proud about with that eighth grade is that we had a lot of, a lot of females that were involved in that program. It was so cool to watch them work and, and really just get cracking on it. And there was actually a distinct disparity between our female students and our male students in terms of their effect. Those, the girls rocked it. It was nice to see that. They had a great time and we're hoping to continue that because we really want to bring a, you know, much more diverse group into our, our programs of CTE. Next slide. So kind of a little drawing about our plan going forward. We really, I really believe, and if you really want a robust CTE program, you have to begin in middle school. There is talk actually legislatively to bring it down to sixth grade. Now, right now it's just talk, but it's pretty serious talk at most of the conferences I've attended. Currently, we begin CTE at seventh grade. And if we start early in their career, like here in this case, we have introduction to construction trades, planning to go to Core Plus in high school, and then Core Plus Two Construction Trades in high school. You can see it's a scaffolding approach. And a really good example of what's going on right now is in the seventh grade, eighth grade, we have the medical detectives program as a science, then enter to human body systems, then biomedical sciences. And then next year, we plan on bringing in biomedical innovations, which completes that suite of biomedical sciences. We are currently in conversations with Olympic Medical Center and Peninsula College partnering with their nursing school and partnering with OMC's a need for folks who want to get into the healthcare career fields. And we're putting together a program that, when kids are going through this laddered approach, that when they turn sixteen to eighteen, we're gonna push together a program of, that's six weeks long that Peninsula College is gonna host in the summer. Four weeks of labs and two weeks of clinic. And the kid will come out of there with a CNA certification. They'll also get nine college credits, and they'll get a half-credit science. That's our plan. And that should be coming to fruition sometime this summer. More to follow, but you can see that stair-step approach, and we're doing that in every program that we're embedding in the middle school, making sure that there are intentional links to the high school pathway. Next slide. And you can see the pathway sequences. Of the six programs of study, we have five that have sequences for graduation. The only one that we do not have currently is a STEM pathway. Next slide. Uh, we actively seek and facilitate and work with partners through our region. Uh, primarily West Sound STEM, Dr. Corinne Borders and her team out of uh, North Kitsap, South Kitsap. Uh, we are part of the Great Northwest Regional CTE Consortium, which really supports our program. From a comprehensive CTE Directors Meeting about every two months. We have workforce, we're part of the Workforce Education Programs Advisory Committee at Peninsula College. We meet regularly with them. We are also part of the Gates Grant Horizon and Limitless Team that has supported College Success Foundation coming into our school. They have granted us twenty-five thousand dollars to embed a college success resource navigator for our folks, and that person's active on our campus one and a half days a week, and will be for the next three years. Uh, we actively partner with SWIM Rotary Club, who's a big supporter of us. We are part, uh, we, we are, we're not really part of the North Peninsula Builders Association, but we are invited to their meetings and they come to ours and advise us in our general committees. Uh, we partner very closely right now with Peninsula Community College, Suzie Ames and her folks. We have a partnership with Yakima Valley Community College and Olympic Community College, as well as Olympic Medical Center. And obviously, Calum Economic Development Council advises into our committee as well as Habitat Humanity. So those are some, it's not all-inclusive, that list. There's a few others I'm sure I've left off. But regularly meet with those groups. Next slide. We also facilitate dual articulation agreements with these colleges so that kids who are uh, completing CTE programs here can also get college credit for those. And as I've said before, Olympic College Lynn Hansmeyer and her team, Brian Knidl, Peninsula College and Pam Moon, Pam Moon at Yakima Valley Community College. And you'll see a list of these here in just a second. Next slide. So these are ones out of Peninsula College, and you'll see there the number of credits that are offered for each one of those. It just lets you kind of review those. And right now, most, all of those are renewed or very close to finishing their renewal process, and they'll go for, they usually go between two to three years in the contracts that we sign. Next slide. Here's our Olympic College ones. You can see that uh, some of these are duplicates from the Peninsula College, but the reason I do it this way is so that kids who might want to go to Olympic College, they already have a transcript that they, that's already printing this out for them, vices, there's a kid that wants to go to Peninsula College. And sometimes Olympic College has different offerings than does Peninsula College. Next slide. And then we have Yakima Valley, we have a course there for Vet Science Two Program. The newest articulation that we just received was in our biomedical sciences, and there's three different types of credits they can get for that, up to thirteen credits for a biomedical sciences program. Renee Caldwell just completed that this week. Again, one of the fun things about being CT Directors, you get to watch the leadership grow. Uh, these students who are so remarkable. Obviously, these are the affiliated teams that we currently use, the chapters, Future Farmers of America, Health Occupation Services, Future Business Leaders, Technical Skills Association, Skills USA, and Family Consumer Sciences. Those are six chapters of the uh, I believe there's eight affiliations that we could use, so we have six. Just one of the examples of, you know, one of our CTSOs this summer, they went to, you know, Cape Canaveral, got to see one of the rockets launch, got to tour the museums there. This was an excellent opportunity for them. Next slide. As far as grant awards, we spend it all on computers, obviously, so. No, that, not true. Not true, public statement, not true. Um, these are the ones that we are currently working this year. Everything that you see highlighted is what has been awarded. Really excited about this health science program, one for a hundred thousand dollars that we received from OSPI. We're gonna completely modernize that classroom to look more like a clinical training room as opposed to, you know, uh, you know, what it looks like today. Well, just keep it at that. Next slide. And then these are the ones that are outside of OSPI. We did qualify and are awarded the three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars to purchase commercial driver's license simulators, and they'll bring us up to a total of four. And we're working through that MOU process right now, because there's some, there's obviously a little bit of legal legal things that we have to make sure we're, we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. Obviously, we have the four-point-nine million for the new center. Uh, we did receive approximately twenty-seven hundred dollars from Port Authority, really excited about their partnership with us. And then the Horizons Grant, which we received twenty-five thousand dollars for. Again, the way I had, pretty much self-explanatory. Uh, we really want to make sure that we're continuing the, the grants and making sure that our, our budget's balanced, that we're supporting our district's goals as well as our CTE program. We want to make sure that we're involved in legislative process. Um, and again, we do that twice a year. We bring in our city council, we ask our county commissioners, we ask our representatives, and they do so faithfully come to our committee meetings. And then we meet regularly with our steering committee. Next slide. And then if you're interested in our four-year plan, we can hit that little hyperlink there, and those slides will be available for you. And you can kind of go through that. Every year is required that our board reviews this and then comes to approval of it. You did it last year for those, but we've added a new column. It's a pass, it's a living document. Every year we add a new column and get rid of a column. There are sixteen criteria that have to be filled over a four-year time span. And I would just appreciate your review of it. If you have any questions for me, please email me, give me a call or stop by. Alright, next slide. I'm gonna hyperlink, it's easier to get into than, um. We have to start from the beginning, folks.
One more time.
I think that was my last slide. Any questions for me?
Question?
Um, I just have a comment that I really appreciate the effort made towards gender parity. Um, to have those young women involved and, and working on careers and um, do you have any like numbers in terms of the male, female?
I actually do, because every year we have to update our comprehensive local needs assessment. I don't have them off the top of my head, but we've seen though, is by the intentional movement of courses being embedded at the middle school, is we're seeing a greater uh, response from demographics who would not normally take courses at the high school. And so I think that's really been a good thing for us. We've also been evaluating our curriculum to make sure that the interests match the demographics to some degree, right? So for instance, not everybody wants to burn and wants to weld, but some people might want to braise and do artisan work. And so by offering a unit of that in those programs, that will bring out some of the folks who would not necessarily be interested from, you know, just to go and, and, you know, put angle iron together.
Tailoring it to there.
You bet.
As somebody who was not allowed to take shop, I really.
Well, you're allowed to now. Come on over. We'll put a welding helmet on you and a stick in your hand.
My other que- a question is, you mentioned earlier, there's no STEM pathway. Why isn't there a STEM pathway?
Well, uh, to complete a pathway, you really just need to have a preparatory piece there that has either an industry-ready credential or a uh, dual credit. And right now, we just don't have both of those aligning. So, um, those things fluctuate year to year. And one of the things that I've spoken with Superintendent Nichols about was, we've we had a few of our programs at Olympic College fall off from dual credit, and we want to reengage those this year.
Yeah, I just want to encourage and congratulate you on your stair-step approach. Because it, to me, that leads to sustainability down the road, building the program.
Sure.
And hopefully, maybe you'll be able to move it to the sixth grade, which would expand that stair-step step program, so. I think that's pretty important. Then we started off tonight talking about technology. And I know at times you and the CTE program requires very specialized computer profiles and special equipment. Um, a lot of that looks like maybe grant equipment, but I can see down the road to maintain the program. There's gotta be a a substantial investment in a different type, maybe one-of-a-kind technology that's very expensive.
Well, we do have some of that, for instance, for an Adamas table or CDLs. We also have these, and I think I showcased these at our last fall meeting. Was it called Z-Space Computers that actually bring out holographic images that you can dissect and move through a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree space right in front of you? So those are fairly expensive, but we do not require the district to push general funds into those because we have a plan for sustainment of those computers, and we do put them on. because we have a plan for sustainment of those computers and we do put them on a life cycle. We understand that, uh, uh, you know, within three years, there will be some technology that will supersede that. And one of the things that most of our grants require is that we have a sustainment plan for that technology. Now, on the other side of that coin, um, for instance, um, we do get enhanced funding and therefore, um, at the end of a school year, like for this, and since this last school year, there was a need for, um, laptop computers for the seventh, eighth grade. Uh, because they were taking CTE classes, we were able to take that additional CTE funding that was sitting out there in a pool and push that into that project, excuse me, for, uh, which made us compatible with the district's goals and also met our goals to ensure that those science programs, uh, the kids who were in those science programs had laptops that were capable of doing what we needed them to do. So there is a lot of compatibility there.
I'd just like to share that, um, the programming that we are stair stepping, um, it takes a lot of foresight, but one thing that Director Flader is excellent at is engaging with community partners early to listen to what their feedback and input is, really think about how to make those things come to a point of being realized. And then keeping them, uh, with us along the way. So there's been so much visitation to the industrial arts classroom because of that type of approach. And I know that we're looking forward now into the, uh, construction and also the biomedical innovation. Um, so, well done.
I was just going to say, I just think it all sounds very exciting and, um, I, congratulations for your vision and for then, it takes two things, it takes the vision and then it takes the execution and it seems like you're doing both. And I'm just, uh, it's, I'm very excited for our students, for the opportunities that they're having.
And again, I know I'm going along on time, I just admit, uh, and I promised Trace I wouldn't. But the, I just want to make a shout out to the staff. Um, they're the ones who bear the brunt of the heavy lift of this. Actually, my job's pretty easy with the kind of staff that we have in the CTE world. And that's from the folks who support us and the secretarial and attendants and, and all the way through the teaching staff. That's been the real heavy lift. They've had to accept these changes and make, they've had to make sense out of my vision. Right? And they've done an incredible job and they've shaped that vision to be better for Squim than if I was working in a vacuum. So I really want to make sure that credit is given where credit is due and it's, and, and I want to push that into our incredible CTE staff. They just do a wonderful job. Uh, they're the ones having to learn these complex computers and these, you know, the CDL simulator. I mean, think about, you get this thing that's four foot by four foot, where are you going to stick it? Right? And you gotta have somebody who's going to volunteer to use their room. Now we got four of them things coming our way. You know, and so now you gotta have somebody who's going to run that program. And that is all is, is the lift. And that, you know, I showcased Mr. McFarland, but any one of our CTE staff members is doing that same heavy lift in their program of study. And I just want to make sure that that kind of credit is given to them. And you're right, uh, Superintendent Nichols, the partnerships that we're developing with our community have been integral to us doing this fast and right. So just thank you for that.
I just also want to share, just as I've been out talking with folks and talking about all the great things that the schools are doing, I'm often reminded that we're, we're kind of in some, somewhat of a, of a bubble here too about, I think when you talk about CTE and what, what, what that entails, some folks may not even know what that acronym is, which is fine. But then even when you explain the acronym, I think to the average person that's not involved in education, they kind of put that in their own category about, oh, that means you're doing this with students. But I don't know that the average person necessarily knows how encompassing it is that we're, it's not just what, they, they might think, oh, well, maybe that's just some, some welding and some wood shop. They don't understand there's the health services aspect or the CDL simulators that you're talking about. And so I think it's just important for all of us, just as we're having conversations, to continue to educate the general public. And, and I know you're, you do a fantastic job of that.
And, and a classic point to that, uh, uh, Director Pickens is this. Uh, because of this health sciences grant, we're looking at purchasing laparoscopic surgery simulators for the classroom. And they're about 1,500 to $2,000 a pop. You get four or five of them, you can have groups of kids doing laparoscopic surgery in a simulator where they're actually working the, the, the utensils and things that a surgeon would use. Uh, as opposed to what they were doing prior to this grant, which was they created a cardboard box with like little chopsticks in there that they were trying to do.
Basically the same thing.
So I'm just telling you, we went from Stone Age. So.
We've been doing pretty well lately with videos and kaleidoscope and some things like that. So I think advertising some of the things, but what your program offers to show people exactly what's going on. And I would encourage you to start with the, the cardboard box and the chopsticks and graduate in the video to the new stuff when it comes in to show them exactly, uh, what's going on. Because you're right, I mean, most people, uh, or a lot of people, when you say, uh, CTE, they think of auto shop.
Or wood shop, yeah.
Or wood shop, or home ec. I mean, they don't think of what, uh, actually what it looks like now.
And one other point too, and I'm remiss by not including it in my slides is, uh, this partnership with College Success Foundation and the Gates, uh, Grant Horizon has propelled our career counseling in a direction that it's really needed. And Sarah Brooks, the counselor there at the high school, who's taking her career-connected kids and has put on such an incredible college, uh, and, and career fair in the spring over the last two years. She's getting support now and, uh, our FAFSA, um, you know, uh, applications are going through the roof because of her ability to connect with those kids and use these, um, funds to help support that, that effort. So just a great shout out to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, uh, next we have, uh, 8.03 Washington Clean Buildings, uh, Director Santos. Welcome.
Hello. So, good evening Superintendent, Board of Directors. Can you hear me, Bo? Can you hear me, Bo?
I see the red light on, so that's a good sign.
All right. Well, welcome to February's Facilities Capital Levy and Other Matters Update. Excellent. For those, you can see short, sweet and simple on the Levy Projects Update. Um, bottom line is HVAC and BMS, the high school are in punch lists and warranty phase. Construction's done. Major mechanical work is done. We're moving on to punch list. Uh, good example of completion of punch list is you all are sitting in the boardroom today with all the systems on. Whereas before, we had to shut them off because they were so loud over here in the corner that we couldn't conduct business. So, good idea of the completion of punch list. So we'll bring this to you for closure here pretty soon. But the, the heat is on and so is the recirculation. All right. So, uh, in progress, Gym 88 ramp design is approved. Uh, had the architect looked at it and we've got an approval now. So we anticipate the final install occur in the next couple of weeks. We've got some material. We stopped here, one door, we still have to shorten slightly. Um, Capitol Projects on the horizon, CTE building, we've decided to hold the RFQ response review until after the bond election. Next slide, please. All right. Over the next 10 or 15 minutes, as I talk for quite a period of time, there is a lot of information here to convey to you. There's been a lot of information that the superintendent and I have had to absorb over the last 45 days since I discovered through WAMOA's, um, fantastic partnership that we are subject to this act. So, let's get started. So first of all, it's background, what is Clean Buildings Act? Uh, the bottom line is the law was signed into law May 7, 2019. It was modified subsequently after that. It is a law that aims to reduce energy consumption in every building in this state that is 20,000 feet or larger. Doesn't matter if it's publicly owned or privately owned. All those buildings are subject to it. The standards mandatory, the performance standards are mandatory. And like I said in the slide here, um, you see floor areas that exceed 50,000 gross square feet. That's a tier one number and I'll get into that here in a moment. Our district is remarked as commercial buildings and I think I've said that to you before, that our construction type is commercial. Our facility maintenance approach is commercial. And, uh, but at any rate, we're subject to the, the act as well. We have two categories of buildings specifically. We have one that is over 50,000 square feet. And we have two that are within the 20 to 50,000, excuse me. Three that are within the tier two range of 20 to 50,000 square feet. Uh, again, compliance is mandatory. For tier one buildings by June 1, 2028, it's important to understand how the dates work. So, June 30th of this year is a mandatory deadline for baselining. So the Energy Star site properties has to be populated. The Washington, um, uh, Department of Commerce sites have to be populated with all the information that they require to make a determination of what an EUI is. It's a fancy term for energy usage index. Don't ask me what the algorithm is. I, I don't know, yet. Um, but nevertheless, it's important to understand, that's the first deadline. The deadline I state here is important because you have to have a year's worth of energy consumption data to prove you're compliant with the standard. So those deadlines back them up a year. And then you have between now and then to retrofit, modify or improve the buildings to meet the EUI. All right. So compliance is defined as energy usage, as I said. And that does not exceed the determined thresholds, the thresholds being the EUIs that are determined by them, not us. In one year of operation after baseline is determined, exceeding the thresholds result in fines. The district has one tier one, uh, middle school and three tier, tier two facilities. That is Gray Wolf, the high school gym, and the H building at the high school. You might wonder why the rest of the high school is not considered. The reason being is those buildings are not thermally connected. That is a term under the law. So, not to get too deep in the weeds, but even though we've all kind of wanted in the past that they all had covered heated walkways, if they did, the whole high school at 100-plus thousand square feet would have to be considered. All right. Before I get into the next slide with the, with the pertinent challenges, oh, it's okay, Tracy, you can go. Excellent. Thank you. Um, it's important to note as I go through this, I want you to think in the back of your minds how this is going to determine in some cases and drive how we construct new schools if we're blessed enough to pass this bond. And you might ask yourself, was that considered as part of the dollars that we asked the voters for? The answer is yes. And the reason is, is because they estimated it to what's called the current energy standard. That's it. Right there. All right. So when you hear engineers in our state talk about the current energy standard, they're talking about the Clean Buildings Act 2019. It's important also to note, as I have noted informally here, that our colleagues at WAMOA, myself included, no other folks across the state that manage facilities, both public and private and federal, uh, which is of course public. But it's important to note that this act and the performance standards that underpin it are the most stringent energy standards for these types of buildings in the whole country, in the whole continental United States. All right? So it's a, it's a very high bar. All right. So anyway, district buildings built over various years, you know that? They don't conform to any of the current lead energy guidelines. Like I mentioned lead because lead is what most people know. Okay, for an energy standard to design to or manage to. Um, the CBSA is more stringent than the highest lead rating. The highest lead rating when I left the airport was platinum. I don't think they've gotten any higher than that. Give you some context as to what that means. The Denver Airport Hotel was $791 million all in. Originally, the building was estimated at a $680 million cost. Change orders only resulted in 30 million of that. The balance of it was to bring it from lead silver, which was the ordinance requirement to lead platinum. So you're on or about 80 million of the 791 to improve the energy, um, efficiency of that particular structure. All right. New state rules are complex. They have requirements that aren't currently in place for our district and will take significant time and effort to implement. What does that statement mean? And I'll try to put that in context to you. Um, we are going to have to have an energy management plan. We are going to have to have an O and M plan. Then that O and M plan, there are requirements. Some of those requirements are if the weather outside is under 62 degrees, thou shall not open the windows. If the weather outside is cold and the heat is on, thou shall not prop the doors open. Okay, these are two examples. A third example that typically goes to the IT world is thou shall shut down your computer at night. Not just log off. Okay, turn things off. Um, thou shall have automatic, uh, lighting controls like we have in this room. All right, on and on and on and on and on. So there's a lot, lot to think about. Only one facility within our district, and that's Helen Holler, has been benchmarked for energy usage. That occurred 2010 as a grant qualification requirement, it's done by an ESCO, uh, as a investment-grade energy audit done by energy engineers, people that are accredited throughout the, throughout the state. Our, our group, our facility management team, we don't have the credential personnel, uh, to benchmark any of these buildings as required by the law. There's a shortage of credential personnel in the state to perform the work right now because there's a lot of folks that are scrambling. Why? They decided not to be early adopters. Why? Because they were betting on the state repealing the law. It didn't happen. And that, that repealing would have occurred last year, November. Uh, we need to choose the right compliance pathway. Uh, compliance pathways can only be considered after the district's tier one to tier two buildings have been benchmarked. The energy, the, the EUI is determined. A compliance pathway is their language pertaining to how buildings are upgraded to meet the EUI and subsequently reduce that energy usage over the year that I previously referred to. Incorrect benchmarks change the district's compliance path could potentially lead to significant wasted costs, to be specific. And that's wasted in upgrade efforts that don't meet the EUI. And once again, failure's not an option. It will lead to fines. Next slide, please. So where are we at today? How are we going to comply? Well, we got to take the first step. And, uh, it's important to understand the implications. So these are implications that were determined as per the energy, excuse me, the penalty, um, calculations as provided by Department of Commerce. These numbers were provided by the consultant that prepared the proposal that's in front of you. Um, you can see that they're significant. These are the fines for missing the June 30 deadline. Um, I, I encourage you to see, to look at the backup document we've provided you, the energy performance standard. Look at pages 84 to 86 of the standard for additional fines related to missing the benchmark deadlines, documentation requirements, compliance targets. I've never seen anything like it. It's, it's two pages of, if you don't, this is what's going to happen. And it's, it is, it is, it is an amazing amount of money, even for our little district. Okay, I've got, um, I'll just give you an example, Pualip right now is looking at almost a half a million dollars in fines. And they've already benchmarked. They don't know how they're going to be able to, to improve their facilities to the point to where they're going to be able to avoid the fines. Um, so it's an unfunded mandate issue really for them.
What?
I'm sorry.
I'm just making my little commentary about unfunded mandates.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Uh, that's my word, understand. We are hopeful. Uh, I say we, when I say we, I meant WAMOA and the other facility managers across the state. We are hopeful that the state. We are hopeful that the state will backstop all of these requirements. With grants that are similar to the one we just applied for in order to get the benchmarking done.
Doesn't, sorry to interrupt.
Yes, sir.
I I think I remember seeing some districts applying, being awarded grants specifically for this, like Edmonds or. Department of Commerce.
Yeah, it's the front end stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, otherwise known as they they were called early adopter grants and to begin with. They provided a certain amount of money to do some initial energy engineering studies. And benchmarking for them. So if you look up on the Department of Commerce website, you'll see the early adopter incentives that went out early on. Those incentives still exist, even though we weren't early adopters and we're a little late to the party. Those incentives still exist and they explained again in that proposal you have in front of you. I attended the Wamoa webinar on three December and for the record. I was exposed to this term Clean Buildings Act. Just after we, the school district, got back from Thanksgiving. So not a long story. It's an invite that I got from Wamoa to attend a webinar. So well, that's great. I'm going to get an education on up and coming legislation. Little did I know that that two and a half hours was going to brief me on something that was established in nineteen. Standards that were adopted in twenty one. And here we are. So again, very eye opening presentation. It's a heavy lift, better get started early. Needless to say, we didn't. So I just began contacting fellow school district facility managers to get qualified firm references and learn the requirements of CBSA. I've got a lot of notes. And I'm still learning and I'm going to continue to still learn since the standard that. You'll see in the background here is a hundred and thirty four pages long. And it reads like an energy engineer wrote it. Which I'm not. Anyway, again, the process of registering all the districts facilities that are subjected to the CBSA. On EnergyStar.gov website. And that's step one in the compliance process. It's very time consuming. Took me over a month. Because I had to go out and find information that I didn't have. OSPI didn't have. Finance didn't have. So it had to be, I had to go to PUD for some of it. I had to go to the county for some of it and on and on. But at any rate, I can, we've, yeah, we completed that on seven January. So step one is done. Happy to say. Directed a, or excuse me, I went to a nine January State Department of Commerce webinar related to the grant that I referred to. That would pay up to two million. It's important to note. That. The state has only appropriated fifteen point four million. For clean building performance grants for public buildings. Like we all know, we have a lot more school districts and public buildings in the state. And it was made very clear to me, if you apply for two million, you're not going to get it. Because there's not enough money to go around and everybody's applying for it. So. At any rate, it's it's important to note that for the required benchmarking by state certified company person, and again, they have to be state certified. They have to be registered with the state. Grant was due thirty January, three o'clock in the afternoon. I submitted that grant application on a day prior. And it was accepted by the Department of Commerce for review. I have that letter. Next slide. So actions to date continued. I began the process of seeking out a company that could help us write the grant, benchmark facilities, develop, plan, build, complete the state's submittals. And to go on record with the state as the district's energy manager of record, those are all requirements. I can't do them. The district doesn't have anybody that can do them. I contacted three qualified firms with requests related to the CBSA requirements as required by procedure sixty six twenty, I believe. Two companies responded. The response you have in front of you tonight was the most comprehensive and cost effective. And I want to make sure that for the record. The firm that assisted us write the grant is the firm represented in the recommended contract before the board. Grant application would not have been submitted without their expertise. I could not have drafted that language and answered those questions. That they wanted to, that we had to have. In order to be considered. So I want to let you all know that we've partnered with Clown Clowney Pewee. And that's not a new thing. We partnered with them to get energy rebates on the equipment that we installed. Here at the high school, but this is a different partnership. This is a partnership whereby. The gentleman that's helping me out is populating all of the energy use data for the four properties that were subjected to. All right. Information I don't have. Information that's very hard to ascertain. And but it's information that's very easy for him to get because they're Pewee. So they've got the meter information, they've got the meter IDs. They know what we had better than I did. So happy to say that they have taken a huge lift off my back and off the back of a potential consultant. By populating our Energy Star usage ratings. And that's exactly what he's done. Actually populated it back, I read an email today, all the way back to twenty twenty one. Didn't have to create virtual meters. Because we had actual meters for these four buildings that are very specific. They do not include anything else. Also requested, or excuse me, received a requested duplicate copy. Of the Department of Commerce Building Owner Notification last Thursday. That letter was something that was sent to the district in twenty twenty one. That notified the district of our tier one obligations and ownership. Provided a very specific code. So the district, me, the district can register the district's tier one buildings on the Washington State Clean Buildings Portal. Which is secure access Washington. It's just another pathway or another connection. That and I finished that today. And that completed step two of our journey. Next slide, please. So. The immediate request that we have in front of you is approve the contract before the board, which will allow the commencement of benchmarking in earnest. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, this is so small. It just didn't. It didn't convey very well from the proposal that's in front of you. But as you can see, it's very methodical. The deadlines are there, the activities are there. You can see practically all of it occurs concurrently. All of it is going to take district participation. That's me. And. It will, all of it will require a, again, a state certified. Energy manager and consultant to complete. And you can see the dates down there. I've reiterated those two already. And you can see the square footages of the buildings that were subjected to. Excellent. So I have for detail for now. For the record, my slide deck was fifteen slides long. And I condensed it down to that. Yes, ma'am. Any questions? Yes.
About, so I, for the buildings, obviously, even if if the bond passes and we are replacing schools, they will still need to be. I mean, Gray Wolf Middle School, each building, we, they will continue. Are we going to, are we planning to replace the gym if the bomb passes?
No, ma'am.
Oh, so all four of them, basically, you don't have a, you can't say, well, we're going to build a new one, so.
You're correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Building H, excuse me, it's important to note that right now our concept is to essentially create a new high school, building onto building H, right? Well, building H being built nineteen ninety eight was being, was built to the. Ninety two UBC is what it used to be called. So it's going to require, because we're touching it, okay, we're touching its infrastructure, we're building on to it. It's going to be, it's going to require its own code upgrades. So by default, building H is going to see the. More than likely, the energy retrofits that it needs to become compliant. All right, I looked at, I looked at some of the usages today. What they call Energy Star ratings and some of the EUI targets for building H. And thanks to some of the new HVAC that we just installed over there. And the fact that it's a nineteen ninety eight building and a nineteen sixty seven building. It's not tragic. I'll put it to you that way. I wish I could give you a bottom line number, but I can't standing here, but. Yeah, the gym is looking a lot better because again, we had the, had that thirty five percent. Energy efficiency gain with the new heat pumps that we put on the roof. There's going to be more to do. For the gym. It's Gray Wolf and the middle school that are going to be the challenge. And it's because their energy usage has gone up on average seventeen to twenty three percent just over the last year. Why? Because the heat works now. No kidding. No kidding. I mean, if you look at where where the where the energy is being spent, it is during the cold cycles. So if you go back a year. And the year before that, when the heat didn't work so well. You can, you can see the line a lot lower. It's not that the loads are changed. Loads haven't changed a bit. It's just that now everything actually works.
I wonder. And obviously, you know, we have the the deadlines in front of us, so I think we have to move forward knowing what we know and I appreciate all the. All the research that you've done and you know, this is just, I'm sure just scratching the surface for us, but I wonder if. You know, where we have one of our. Representatives who's like Chair of the the House Capitol Budget Committee and Steve Theringer, I wonder. I'm sure that he's obviously well versed on this and the impact. I just wondered about adding that to some of our usual. Conversations that we typically have on advocacy, but just. Talking about the impact of something, something like this and what that means for. For a district like ours, and even if if you're available to 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 bring you into that conversation somehow.
Yeah, me too. If you allow me. Can I give you a few talking points in the meantime?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. So it it doesn't. It pains me to have to. Bring the oh my gods to you, okay? It's it's not something I I like doing. It's a necessary step. We have to get into it. Bottom line is, we just got to act on it. And we're going to make it work. We will not get fined. Okay, so help me goodness, we will not get fined. The talking points I'll give you is, this is step one, baseline first. With that baseline. We can bench, we can create the benchmarks. It's not our benchmark. Okay, it's energy.gov. It's their benchmark. So once that benchmark and those targets occur. Then there are engineering studies that have to be done on the buildings that are subjected to the performance standard. From those energy studies come recommended retrofits to those buildings. So all these steps I'm talking about cost money. Especially the retrofits. I don't know to what degree. They will be. At Gray Wolf and the middle school. They seem fairly adaptable to me. But I'm not an engineer. So I will tell you that if I were to have a conversation. With my state representatives. The first question I'd ask is after we're benchmarked, who's going to pay for the? Who's going to pay for the energy studies? Who's going to pay for the, you know, the engineering studies that have to occur on our buildings? They're very expensive, as you know, from the just. Fairly rudimentary BCI's in the assessments that we just did and seismics that we just did. All right, you can count on. At least five to six times that minimum. Because they got to dig into the prints to see how the place is built. And then they have to create the recommendations on how to make the EUIs. And that is the compliance pathway that I referred to. We don't want to go down the wrong road. Okay, we don't, we don't want to waste that time and we don't want to. You know, try to infuse what I call retrofits or improvements to these buildings that don't work. They've got to work and they've got to be right upfront. So that's the first step that's going to cost money. And of course, the big step. The big dollars come along with retrofits.
Right.
Now, remember, the retrofits have to occur. So we have a year to measure the improvement. Before the deadlines that I noted before. It's not a lot of time. Yes, sir.
Well, I appreciate and thank you for your expertise and background and due diligence. And probably just downright blood, sweat and tears of you, your staff and partners. I don't want to see all that hard work go to waste. I don't know what's going to happen to these standards, you know, on a state level, national level. I would encourage us to try to meet those standards. No matter what happens to the Clean Buildings Act of two thousand nineteen, because it sounds like it's probably the right thing to do. And if we don't do it now, we'll probably need to do it. In the near future, so. You know, I don't want to waste taxpayers' money, but at the same time, I don't want to forego having. Buildings that meet these standards, because I think in the long run, it'll save us money.
Yes, sir.
And. Make us. Well, it will save, it'll save money and it's the right thing to do.
I concur. And I'll add to that.
Okay.
The two buildings, the two modern, more modern buildings are teenagers is what I call them. The Gray Wolf and in the middle school. They're in a part of their life cycle where they're due for midlife refits anyway. From from an HVAC perspective and from an energy conservation and sustainability perspective, okay? And I'm not just talking about floor tiles and paint finish and so on, although that we need those too. But when you're talking service light refits. And you know that term? They're due anyway. It was coming. Either by force or by standard. One or the other. So I concur with what you're saying. And when those refits, retrofits occur, or refits in this case, yes. We will start to enjoy the fruits of those, of those energy efficiencies that we build in. It's always, it's always a business question. What's the ROI you're shooting for? The the interesting thing, though, about commercial buildings is. Unless you're a business. If you're a government agency, it's soft ROI. It's not hard ROI. Because that that lifecycle replacement process is coming with you, like it or not. And that is kind of the message that we've been conveying along the way with replacing the high school in Helen Holler. It's the same thing, really. But in this case, we have an opportunity to make those two other schools a lot more efficient.
Then when you mentioned midlife buildings, I thought you were going to say midlife crisis. And we don't, we want to avoid a midlife crisis on the.
Indeed, we do. That's correct. Thank you. Yes. Any other questions?
Seems like the issue is just being jammed into this particular timeframe. It'd be nice to have a little more flexibility in the timeframe.
Yeah, we had to do these. Yeah, these are revolutions we would have had to have done anyway. Would we have had more time to? Contemplate. The potential. Refits that I referred to? Yes. Yes. But the first two steps of. Baselining and benchmarking. They would have done it back in twenty one. They could have sat on that too. They wouldn't have changed anything. We still would have been subject to the same EUI.
Well, thank you.
There we go.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're doing a report.
Okay, well, right out of the gate, I'd like to recognize that this is the first day of National School Counseling Week. And to honor our school counselors, I would like to read the following proclamation and recognition of this week and the important work that. School counselors do every day for our students. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential. And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests and talents. As these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors help families focus on ways to further the academic, career and social emotional development of their children. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources. That can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process. That enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, I Superintendent Regan Nichols do hereby proclaim February third through seventh, two thousand twenty five. As National School Counseling Week. And you know, as you heard in Director Flader's presentation about Sarah Brooks at the high school and the career counseling that's going on. Our high school and beyond planning that is happening, starting in middle school. Our school counselors that are elementary schools who are really helping students who are. Needing to learn aspects about self-management and making good decisions and helping them with any challenges along the way. Or just simply teaching all of the skills that it takes to be citizen-like in school. I just commend the work because in this day and age, we need all of the guidance that we can bring to students around so many different arenas. And school counselors do that. So. I credit them with some wonderful work in our district. Okay, next, we're going to just talk quickly about snow. Today was the first day where we had snow routes for our busing system. And I'm sure you may have heard that people got robocalls this morning. They went out early. And we do have snow routes that stop at strategic points in our community. To have students come down to the bus rather than sending our buses up some of the mountain routes. I want to say to you that we're using the traditional bus routing that we have for snow routes. But we will be exploring what Smart Tag could potentially do so that in the future, we're very customized about it. We have a great partnership that is getting better and better. Our Director of Transportation, Rich Fulmer, just met with Clallam County. Today to talk about how we could be partnering so that. They are giving us good information very early in the morning, making sure that we're getting crews that are out on the roads. For timing that helps us with busing. And they were amenable to this and will be communicating with us throughout the week because we see this week coming up. We'll have challenging mornings. I'd like to just give a shout out to Director Fulmer at the Transportation Center. I don't know if everybody realizes what it takes to make decisions in the morning for snow routes or. Potential school cancellations or two-hour delays, but he was up at four AM this morning driving for us. Giving information so we could make a solid call. And I just have to commend that work because it's definitely in the dark and behind the scenes. Okay, so any questions about snow routes or how we call for weather? Okay, we just want to let everyone know, be attentive in the mornings this week. We're seeing that we'll have to make some decisions day to day. And we also made decisions Athletic Director Henley called all practices to conclude by five PM tonight. To make sure our student athletes were getting home at a decent hour, so. Really good watch on this. Okay, the next I'd like to do is just let you know that we did have. Recent publication of Kaleidoscope Go Out. It is our fifth publication of the magazine. This one had a theme for community partnership, and so many of the articles did have a connection to some of our community partnerships. But I'll say the celebration of what's going on in our schools is coming through every single addition. And it just was a fantastic piece of work and I commend our Public Information Officer Megan Lake. For really taking the reins here and working so much with the. Staff at each school to make sure the articles are relevant, timely and showcasing what's going on. Alright. I'd like to talk to you about what we've been doing out and about. Of course, there have been multiple presentations and Director Sanos. He's not getting a lot of sleep because you, as you heard, that that whole grant. Work was significant, but he's also been out on the road with our presentations and doing community tours. So thank you so much for all the work that you're. Doing for us. We have had Zoom presentations. We've had an evening community forum that I would say was well attended. We've had a district community forum and had regional realtors come also. And then making sure that we went and were visible. So we headed out to the basketball game versus Port Angeles. Just to let people know, hey, we're here to answer questions. Here's the conceptual map that we have. And we were able to engage with some folks around that. Coming up, KSQM will be tomorrow. Radio. And that's one PM if you're interested in tuning in. And then I would say to you that we are closing up the presentations, but are always at the ready. If there is a group or there are calls or. Emails, communication for more information. Okay, any question about the our communication or? What we've been out doing?
I will just make a comment that Kaleidoscope is really so impressive and it's something that. When I first joined the board, I kept thinking, well, there's must be a way to get out there, the good things that are happening in the schools and. I just. Megan like and the team have just put together a really wonderful magazine. The the writing is engaging and just the variety of things going on in the schools. So. Congratulations on that.
I will pass that along. A lot of hard work, but I would say too that. The hard work of putting the magazine together only comes alive when you've got all that hard work going on in classrooms and with programs. And after school and the students like you saw today, just. Lot of energy. Great. I will let you know that at the district office, we have had some office moves. So as of today. The Superintendent's Office is now on the opposite side of the reception area. So that Tracy and I now have an actual doorway that can open for our communication. We have the clothing closet. McKenna Vento has moved to the end hallway. And where my office used to be, and that has become just a really great space for our clothing closet. Because it actually has closets in there to utilize, but it also is on the first floor and very accessible to visitors. So that it'll make it easier for folks to come in and get the resources they need and also for us to stock it. So that is great. And then. Our Technology Center, Bo's been very busy talking a lot about technology plans, but also moving. Upstairs to offices with his team. For. Additional storage space and also just a different configuration. And then we had teaching and learning. McKenna Vento Personnel had moved out to the office on the first floor, so Teaching and Learning has Elizabeth Lawson, our coach. Moving up into that space, so that's great. It just has worked out quite well. We are on day one, I will admit. We'll see how it goes, but so far, so good. Right, Bo? Yeah. Okay, we went to a student growth goal webinar today with our MAP. Measures of Academic Progress. When you have the next study session with the principals, you hear about map testing. And we had the administrative team in a professional development to learn how to maximize use of the reports. And how to use the information that's included in those reports to make instructional decisions. And with the number of interventions that are going on across all levels, you know that the middle school and the high school put extended learning time in. We certainly will be utilizing that information. I also would let you know that we've been getting notifications from the city of Squim and or the county over time. About subdivisions that are going in. So I keep talking in presentations about how we expect the housing to continue to increase. Over time and that construction is happening. We've just received notice of a hundred and four single-family homes to be developed on third. So we'll keep you up to date on those and to let you know that we do have an upcoming study session on February twelfth. We will, of course, be discussing the outcome of our election and then we will be having. Another study session this month on the twenty fourth of February regarding. Progress on our school improvement plans. That's all I have.
Questions? I just wanna thank you for for honoring our our school counselors. It's. Important and and if I'm not mistaken. Portion, portion of our school council is funded with EPNO levy, is that right?
Absolutely, that's right.
Worth noting, tis the season. So. Alright, thank you very much. That'll move us on to board business. We have a first reading of. Ten point zero one, first reading and approval of policy. Thirty-two ten nondiscrimination. And before I take a motion on this, I did. Did have a conversation with Superintendent Nichols about this one in particular that I just wanted to get. Input from the rest of the board on. My my understanding is most of the changes in here are just to make sure it's in compliance with the. The current current law and RCWs, but one area that did catch my eye was. Where it talks about the training and it's talks about all administrative staff and certificated staff, but then it also says classroom staff. And I I was just curious why it wouldn't be. Listing off all staff or just about all of our staff could possibly have interactions with students, whether it be bus drivers, par educators and. So that was just a question that I had. Did you want to speak a little bit on that or?
Sure. Victoria and I have spoken about that. Would you like to share? Would you like me to? Okay. With this new policy, we recognize that. When you work in a school system, the likelihood that you are at some point going to engage with students is highly likely. So we are actually taking the approach that we will do far-reaching, comprehensive training across all employee groups. And not relegate it to what the WAC requires, which is classroom personnel. The classroom personnel, I do believe, was meant to capture, not just a pair of educators, but also therapists. Who might be in with students, other staffing that might come along, but we figured. Why not make sure that all employee groups are receiving it so that will be implemented for next school year per this policy?
And. Obviously, the the law is saying that it should should just be, or should at least encompass these, but there's no prohibition against us. Making an adjustment to a policy to make it more, to make it broader and still, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So it doesn't limit the who can participate in these.
Correct.
So my. My potential suggestion, I'm open for board feedback, but my suggestion would be that we just. Still move it on to a second reading, but with the with some language that just instead of limiting it, just say all staff. As opposed to just the certificated staff, I'd like that to be a part of our. Our policy, so that would be my. Suggestion unless you recommend that in order to make that suggestion, it wouldn't. Would you recommend that it go back to the Policy Committee or do you think that that's a small enough change that we could just still move it forward?
I feel we could move it for forward because we are entirely meeting the letter of the law. There's no doubt about that. And the comprehensive nature is up to us, so. We can move it forward and adapt that language. Actually, I think coming back to you with a second reading, especially because we're speaking about it here.
So I would like to, I would like to propose, I would like to motion that we move. Move this policy on to a second reading with that one amendment that the training is something that we would provide to all staff. And not just the specified staff. I would. Much enjoy somebody to possibly second my motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion.
Is there gonna be additional costs with? Making it a policy as rather as opposed to a discretionary to include. More people beyond the original training that's required by that policy?
Great question. So we're going to be using a training slide deck that has been provided by OSPI. So it's just a matter of loading that into our training system that already exists and we have trainings that all staff are already required to. Take, so we would just put that in as one of the loads.
One thing that I'll say is. I definitely trust, trust your discretion as well as well as our HR director as the, I didn't specify exact. Verbiage, just in case the wording is something, but you certainly capture the spirit of it. Just so whether it's not, whether we use the words that versus all employees or however, however, next sense to word it would be the intent of my motion. So.
Okay.
Are we not doing that now? Training staff on. Nondiscrimination.
We've been training the staff every other year because there was no requirement, so we have cycles of some trainings that don't have to be annual. Would you like to add to that?
Well, I think that's that's accurate. I, when we do our annual trainings for staff every year, there's a schedule that I follow. And so now with the implementation of this, we're just gonna add that in to what we would do every year. So yes, staff is trained. And I also know that individual schools will have their own very specialized training. For what their climate and culture is that they've been doing on their own as well. So this is something that we. We do. We do hold as highly valuable. But with this policy, there's just some. Some checkboxes we need to make sure that we're, that we're also doing.
Alright, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And that's gonna bring us to. First reading and approval of policy fifty-ten nondiscrimination and affirmative action. I move. And move we send policy. Policy fifty-ten nondiscrimination affirmative action to a second reading. Thank you. Do we have a second?
My second.
Any discussion? All all legally required changes, and I do see this is recommended by a policy committee to approve. Alright. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passing. And that's gonna bring us to first reading and approval of policy. Fifty-four hundred personal leaves.
I move that we move policy fifty-four hundred personal leaves to a second reading.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Just a quick question. Is there a significant change that needed to be made in how we do personal leaves? Does this affect collective bargaining agreements?
Actually, this was to remove language from COVID times about vaccination mandates. And so we removed that portion of the policy and everything else remains the same.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And I believe that is the conclusion of our business, so. We are scheduled to meet again on. We said our. Yeah, on the twelfth or. Is that gonna be the? Study session, so. With that, please, everyone.
We have the executive session.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you. We are not going to adjourn. We are gonna recess to executive session and. I do need to state the reason for executive session, right? It's gonna be for approximately forty minutes and that will be to review the performance of a public employee. So. So we'll go ahead and move to recess.